2017, nine AM in council chambers. And first up is the introduction of late items. No, nothing, thank you. Good thing, because we have four on the agenda already. And so we need a motion, please, to accept the agenda. Thank you. Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor? Good. And we have some delegations with us this morning. And first of all, we have Matt Hassan, who's brought an entourage with him. And that's perfectly all right, from the Asuus Museum Society. And this is the annual update. So whoever is going to speak, oh, it's Cara. Good, all right. Cara, would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
Do you have a little idea? Not much. Good morning, Madam Mayor, councilors, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, I'm Cara Burton. I'm the executive director and curator at the Asuus Museum. So I will give you a brief update on 2016, what we've accomplished, and what we're moving into in 2017. And then Matt will speak and give an update on our new building plans. So first of all, just a quick update. Nothing's changed in our operating. Our main function is preserving the history and heritage of Asuus and area. We have a volunteer board of directors, as well as a number of volunteers that help me out. I am the sole employee there. And I rely quite heavily on my volunteers to keep us going. Our annual budget is approximately $100,000. That includes the money that we receive from the town, the regional district, and various grants that we apply for, for certain projects. We typically get two summer students for our summer, and that is a grant program through Young Canada Works, which is a federal program. So in 2016, we had a very successful year. Our visitor numbers were the highest we've seen in the past 10 years, which is excellent. Our membership numbers are also up. We had our Joseph Plaskett exhibit on. For those of you that may not know, Joseph Plaskett was an artist. He passed away in 2014. Prior to his passing, he donated a collection of 35 of his pastels, which are all local scenes that he created when he visited his family here. We also had two of our phonographs restored, which I know many of you attended last year to see. That is now an ongoing project, which I'll explain a little bit later. We had a very successful event that Francis Solajek put on for us at Home Hardware, an excellent fundraising event in June. And throughout the year, I visit the elementary school and all the classes. And of course, all the classes come and visit us at the museum as well. So we do do quite a bit of outreach. We've also upgraded all the lighting and had all the lighting in the museum repaired. And it's made a huge difference in being able to see out in the Quonset. We also partially painted the exterior of the building. Into 2017, we, over the Christmas break, we painted the interior of the galleries. So we've completely refreshed that. And we have two new exhibits that are set up. One is titled "One Step, One Step Forward," which is a comparison of artifacts that we have and what they are today. So our phonographs and a music player today, an old telephone and today's version. So it's quite interesting, and the kids are really enjoying that. We also have a nostalgia wall, which is a collection of photos from our archives, as well as a few key artifacts. We are redoing what used to be the Victorian parlor into a den setting, sort of a men's office, which the key piece for that is the map cabinet that we received from the Haynes House before it was demolished last year. We've also applied for a rather, well, a good-sized grant for what we're calling GO, which is Gather Asuus. It is to create a smartphone app, which is basically, it'll basically be an interactive game around town that people can use on their smartphones, including and incorporating our interpretive signs and other key features in Asuus. So we're, we applied to that for the B.C. Museums Association, the Canada 150 funding that, that B.C. Museums had available. And as well, our visitors and volunteers are key, and numbers are growing. So ongoing, we, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention one thing about the phonographs. Our snowbird, who I cornered two years ago and took home two of our phonographs over the last year to restore, last spring, when he brought those back, he took home our Edison Standard, which plays the, or the wax cylinder records. And so he brought that back to us this year, plus donated a second one that plays a slightly different type of wax cylinder. So now we have four working phonographs at the museum. So that's a lot of fun. So I get to play DJ now and then. So ongoing, again, we are always improving our visitor experience. We always have available walking tours around town, pre-arranged group visits to the museum. And we get out into the community as much as we can, the elementary school, of course. We have a new exhibit that I'm working with the elementary school that I'll be setting up today called "May Asuus." And that's an exhibit that the students actually have created. They all had to bring an item that was important to them, that meant Asuus to them. So it'll be kind of fun, and the kids are looking forward to seeing that. We're always updating our policies, our business plan, and our, of course, preservation is always ongoing. So now I will introduce Matt. Matt Hassan is the president of our society, and he will speak about our new building.
Before you start, Matt, can I ask about the roof?
It's an ongoing project. Yes, we have, we have unintended skylights at parts of the roof, and we've had some difficulty finding anyone who wants to venture up and do anything about it, so.
And can I also just say that I've really appreciated all of the open houses that you've had over the last year? I think I've been to, I've tried to attend all of them, and I think, I say thank you very much, because it's really brought the museum alive for a lot of people who might not normally walk through the door.
We have been to have about eight to 10 a year.
Good, thank you.
An excellent opportunity.
And, and an opportunity for members of the community to come and just enjoy, because it is our museum. It doesn't belong to the Museum Society. It belongs to the community of Asuus and its district. So I'm going to give you a quick update on the new museum project. I will say that when we were delayed in getting possession of the building, it knocked us off the rails a little bit. But that was then, and this is now. We're back on track, and I can assure the community that the plan is well and in place. So if I could have the next slide. Very briefly, what we have, we have a very clear sense of place. We have set out with the new museum plan to concentrate on an Asuus museum. And so we are designing it with a view to a museum that fits within our natural setting, in our fertile valley, the warm lake, the crossroads, the proximity to border, and all of those things. We have community support for the project, and witness the fact that the referendum was approved and the purchase, the property was purchased on Main Street for the new museum. We have a fundraising plan. We will have a centrally located building. We have a practical architectural plan, and we have an exciting exhibit plan for the new museum. And to that end, we're distributing to council the new document that we produced to help promote and support the museum, as well as two one-page fact sheets, which, in a summary, tell people quickly and in essence what it is we're up to and what they can expect will happen. So on the next slide, if I may. Briefly, in terms of the architectural and exhibit concept, let's look at the building quickly for a moment. The building is going to be welcoming. Level access off Main Street, improved entrances and exits on both levels, an elevator to move people and artifacts from the lower level to the main level to the mezzanine. And that's important, because we want to be able to accommodate all ages and, and types of people who may come to visit. We have a safe building. It will be sprinkled. It will have anti-slip floor services, and it will have improved stairways and accesses so that anyone can move safely about the building with ease. We're going to have a green building. We're going to be insulating the inside of that building throughout and repaneling it. We're going to go to energy-efficient glass, zone control for the heating and air conditioning and ventilation. We're going to be using efficient lighting, including much LED lighting in the building. We're going to be putting a new roof surface on the building with extra insulation in order, again, to reduce, to increase the energy efficiency. And we're going to install a photovoltaic array on the entire roof of the building, which will be capable of meeting at least, if not more, two-thirds of the electrical needs of that building in perpetuity. And then some added features. We're going to be putting a new mezzanine in the building where the offices and the meeting rooms and things like that will be. This will also provide our executive director with a line of site supervision, so she could look out over the building and see the entire building, which is just a safety and security feature. We'll have a gift shop off the main reception area, where we'll focus on things that are unique to Asuus but not in competitive, in competition with local merchants. We're going to have a unistrut grid system put into the ceiling. And you can think of this as a suspended ceiling on hormones without panels. It's a black-tracked metal, but it's in, from this, that all of the electrical services and sound connections will be run, so we can easily adjust lighting and so on in the future as things change. But it will also be from where we hang panels and displays and movable dividers and so on. So we get maximum efficiency from the building from something like that. We're going to have an archive room in the lower level, which will complete, completely environmentally controlled, and therefore be a safe, secure place for our many sensitive artifacts. There'll be ample space for storage of artifacts that are not on display. Only a fraction of artifacts can ever be on display, so we need to be able to rotate things but store them securely. And in the, in the future, there's going to be a multipurpose room downstairs for meetings, for presentations, for displays, for gatherings. And we're hoping in Phase Two to turn the outside area to the west of the building toward Dolce Vita into an urban park and a performance area, so that we can have that kind of feature within the context of the museum operation. As far as, I'll go back for a second. As far as the exhibits are concerned, I'll leave you to look at the document, because I think it describes in some detail. But to give you a flavor, our plan was always to develop a museum exhibit that was of value to both visitors and residents alike. And so no matter how you came to it, you would find it meaningful and fulfilling. And to give you a sense, through tapping into the voices and the faces and the stories and events that shaped Asuus, a sense of how Asuus came to be where it is at present. So the feature was local. When you walk into the new museum, you'll have a sense of walking into Asuus. You will walk in, and you will be greeted by images of local people welcoming you, starting with First Nations and the various other groups that make up the community. On the walls of the museum will be photo murals of the valley. And so you'll have a physical sense of having come into Asuus. And then you will track through themes and stories and events and activities, which will be a combination of fixed and movable exhibits and changing exhibits over time. The content will be in three themes: the land, the people, and the industries, and the changes that have occurred in that. And unlike the current museum, where artifacts tend to be central, the new museum is going to have artifacts complementing the stories and the voices and so on. And so a slightly changed approach. The budget is there. The budget may, may bother some people in terms of $2 million for the building, but I'll tell you that a half a million of that is to bring the building up to code and standard for public buildings. Complete changes of wiring and plumbing and roof and entrances and things of that nature. But also included in that budget, and there's a more detailed one in the booklet, all of the soft costs, the architectural fees and the services and the contracts and so on. And we've separated those out, because many of the granting agencies will not accommodate soft costs. They will not provide for it. But they are a cost that we have to deal with, and so we've separated them out in the budget. But the building will be about $2 million if we do everything. Again, we've reiterated, we have never expected, we said at the beginning, the museum will look after the cost of its development if the community will buy the building. That commitment holds, and so we will endeavor to raise the money necessary, but there will be no expectation at any time that further local taxpayer dollars are involved. This is up to us, the community, to do this. The exhibit plan is about $5 million to $500,000. And again, the booklet we've distributed will give you some sense of details there. And so the next slide. What the future holds. 2020 is just the beginning. We hope to have, over time, an ongoing plan to finish Phase Two of development, which will include the multipurpose room and additional washrooms on the lower level and, and so on, on the list. What we want to do in Phase One, though, is make sure that all of the infrastructure for the future is done. The wiring, the plumbing, the elevator, all of those things are there. And if we cannot afford to do the elevator at first, the shaft and installation will be done in Phase One, so that in the future, when we can do other things, we just add to the foundation that we have built. So what do we need? In a word, we need community support. We need people in the community to help us, as many hands will make light work. We need folks to step up and help us championing and promoting our vision for the museum and the community. So it's not just a few people talking about it, but a number of people talking about the value of this for the future. We need community support in terms of volunteering time and skills and expertise at the museum. However little people can contribute, it will be valued and will help. We need people to consider becoming a committee or project member, to help plan, promote, and participate in fundraising activities, and of course, through donation, either in monetary terms, or in goods and services, or local artifacts, because we will have a safe, secure facility for the future. That means that some of the artifacts in the community that are valuable to people could be donated safely to the museum. And so we go to our last slide, because it's where we begin and where we end. Our vision is 2020. January 1st, 2020, we will take possession of the building, and we hope by early, late spring or early summer of 2020, we will open the new museum and be able to welcome visitors, residents, and visitors to the city alike, to our new museum. We'd be pleased to answer any questions you have, and follow up either privately or in any other venue. So, Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate all of the Museum Society's energy, and I love that the vision is 2020. I think that is so catchy. Good thing Donald Trump didn't find that one before we did. I, we certainly may have some questions here, but thank you very much, both of you, for your presentation. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, thank, and thank you, Matt. I don't have a question, I just wanted to point out that I found the irony in, in the smartphone app for a museum. It was kind of interesting, as to where we're at today.
It very much so. And in fact, at, at one point in the design considerations, we talked about putting technology into the museum. But the classic problem with technology is it changes very rapidly. It requires maintenance, often complicated and costly maintenance. But we recognize that most people these days carry the technology. And so we are going to be designing features in the museum so that people can tap in to content in the museum with their own technology, or borrow a tablet from the desk and be able to do that. So we'll have people contributing their technology, and it's easy for us to stay on the upside, supporting the technology, much more difficult to provide it, so.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam McArduff. Well, Matt and Cara, one of the, the primary things that when you come and make a presentation, if there's not many questions, and you've done a really good job, so. Just wondering if you could comment on, I know you had the budget figures up there. I'm wondering about ongoing contributions and fundraising and grants. Is there any activity to kind of move towards that $2.5 million? Maybe you could let us know where you're at now?
Yes, I would be glad to. The capital reserve fund, as you know, which is the net lease revenues that the current tenant is paying to continue to use the facilities, are accumulating in the RDOS. Those monies, we've drawn from some of those monies to do preliminary design work and things like that. But our projection right now is that we will have in excess of a half a million dollars in the capital reserve fund when we hit that possession point. And so that's a part of the funding that's in place. We've had a number of smaller fundraising activities. We currently have about $50,000 in the legacy fund that have been contributions from individuals and groups. We are going to begin to step that pace up in terms of activities. Members of the museum and, and some local folks have been invited to a wine and cheese on the 31st of March at the museum, so that we can say thank you to the members and say that membership has its value, and we would like to be able to celebrate you. We're going to be meeting with representatives of various groups in the community in terms of not what you can give us, but how you can help us spread the word about the importance of the museum and its value to the community. The major money sources all require that we would be within 18 to 24 months of spending the money before they'll even consider an application for the money. And so our planning has all been done in terms of, we're loaded and ready to go forward when the window opens, in terms of federal and provincial programs. And we've had conversations with our MLA and our MP regarding the possibility of further government support. So our plan for fundraising is in place, but right now, we're concentrating on activities that will encourage people to get more interested, more knowledgeable, and more involved for when the time comes. Does that help?
Perfect. Yeah. Yes. Counselor Youngberg?
Thank you. Thank you, Matt and Cara. It's been wonderful, and I'm so glad to see you still here. I was nervous when I saw that sign in front of your house one day. Anyways, great job. And we just look forward to the fundraising events, and I don't really have any questions. I followed it a little bit along the way, and hope to see you on the 31st of March. And great, great work.
Thank you very much.
Good. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We certainly always appreciate you coming and giving us a, a clear picture of what's happened and what you have in the future. So you're welcome back anytime, of course.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is Dan Parker and residents of Pinehurst, is it Pinehurst Place? Pinehurst? Am I correct? And, and are you Mr. Parker?
I am.
Oh, and thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right. My wife and I have lived at Pinehurst Place since September 2001. And I'm speaking on behalf of the signers of the petition submitted to the town of Asuus on February the 7th, 2017. Other petitioners may wish to make comments as well at the end of my presentation. We had, they had hoped to have this before you in February. However, today, March 20th, is the earliest we could appear before you, as the corporate administration officer was, had been away on vacation, I presume. It is necessary for me to give you some history about the vacant property at 12300 Pinehurst Place. Excuse me. A number of people resident on Pinehurst Place, of which my wife and I were apart, submitted a petition in 2004, and that was respecting the unkempt and unsafe condition of the land and the dilapidated trailer. Holes presumably for water shut off, valves were left uncovered, pieces of lumber in various sizes, and electrical wire that was strung about, which we couldn't determine if they were live or not. Weeds and tumbleweeds were all over the place. The trailer, the subject of this petition, was also parked haphazardly with flat tires near the strata clubhouse. We were concerned that grandchildren of the then residents of Pinehurst Place would play and be injured or electrocuted in this dangerous piece of property. In this case, council took action, and the vacant area was cleaned up. The weeds and tumblebeads were removed, the holes covered, and the electrical wires rolled up and removed. The owner was also ordered to keep the weeds cut down so that they would not multiply, and he had this done for a number of years. However, the employees of the town were doing it in the later years. I imagine he was charged for that. He also fixed the trailer tires and had it towed away. A few years later, sand and silt from the vacant property was blowing across the road in the front, on the front yards and against the windows and sidings of the property on the west-northwest side of Pinehurst Place. One of the residents at the time spoke to the owner, Michael Mortimer, requesting that he put in a sprinkler system to keep the sand wet, to prevent it wind-dry, blowing around in the winds. He compiled, complied with that request, and did some site preparation for the first duplex of the eight that have been approved. As an aside, to this day, I fail to understand why the council of the day approved the building of eight two-level duplexes jammed together on that vacant property. Single-level ranchers, no more than four, probably would have been the appropriate for, for the site. The time since our trailer parking petition was submitted, the bylaw officers have been out to view the trailer site. They have found that the owner of the property to be in violation of the Good Neighbor Bylaw, 1277, by allowing the property to be unsightly. The CAO has instructed the bylaw officers to initiate the unsightly property process. And I understand that it should take about two to three weeks to have that done. I think it's, it'll be three weeks tomorrow. The, the trailer, the, however, they also reported to the CAO that the trailer is parked legally, since the owner has a valid development permit as well as a building permit, to park his construction trailer on his property. But they found that the steps to the two doors of the trailer were slightly, were illegally placed on the roadway and the cul-de-sac of Pinehurst Place. The two sets of steps are now upended at the rear end of the trailer. There appears to be no road allowance or sidewalk allowance on the eastern side of the cul-de-sac, as apparently the owner's property ends at the curb. Interestingly, our property ends approximately two and a, three-quarter meters from the curb. I would have thought the same would have applied on the both sides of the street. Nevertheless, I believe that the trailer is not legally parked in, in the front and western corner, excuse me, and is on or over the curbing of the cul-de-sac. However, we, the petitioners, are not seeking to have the trailer moved slightly to the east of this location to make it legal. We are seeking to have the trailer removed from the view of tourists and visitors, and more importantly, from ourselves. This first, the first duplex was started in 2014, and the second one was started in March of 2015. And the exterior of the second duplex was completed in late spring of 2016. Near the end of September 2016, the trailer was towed to its present location, opposite the, directly opposite the home at 12508 Pinehurst Place. Six months ago, and in that time, not even a spade has been put in the ground for site preparation for the third duplex. Mr. Mortimer did not have the courtesy of letting us know what he was planning to do with the trailer, nor how long he expected to leave it in our faces. During those long six months, the owner, Michael Mortimer, was approached by three petitioners to ask him to move the trailer from our view. In early October, he replied that he was waiting for loads of fill, which he said was hard to find. After the fill had been delivered, he, he replied that, that it never happened, he never moved it. In late November, when asked by another petitioner, he replied that the trailer was full of tools and was too heavy, and it needed a level service on which to be parked. Again, it never happened. In mid to late January, when asked by one more of, once more by a third petitioner, he replied that- replied that he would move it the next day. Then on the next day, he said he wouldn't move the trailer. The move request was granted and then refused. The CAO in an email to me said that the owner had told the bylaw officer, or maybe there were two of them, I'm not too sure, in the conversation he had with them, with him, that he would move the trailer to a location out of our view where he needs the ground to be compacted and where he will be building a retaining wall. Unfortunately, considering our experience with his responses to our queries, we have little confidence that he will move the trailer. There will never be enough compaction or some new reason why he cannot move the trailer and it will come up. The residents of Pinehurst Place are diligent in the upkeep and exterior of their homes, the exterior of their homes and the front yards and are proud of their work. The old construction trailer is, and its material beneath it, and the upended steps at the rear of the trailer detract and distracts from the beauty and neatness of Pinehurst Place. The unkempt condition of the vacant building sites also adds to the visual pollution of the area. However, that condition may be rectified by the operation of Part III of Section 3.11, Subsection A or B of the Good Neighbor Bylaw 1277. We believe that a successful argument can be made, however, that Section 10-1 of Part 10 of the Good Neighbor Bylaw 20, 1277, applies in the present situation, applies in the present location of the old unsightly trailer and the two sets of steps at its rear and the material beneath it. 10-1 reads, "Without limitation," and those are probably the effective words, "no owner or occupier of real property shall cause, allow, or permit a nuisance on or from the real property." Nuisance is defined in Schedule A to Bylaw 1277 as follows. Nuisance means anything that annoys or gives trouble or which is offensive, irritating, or a pest to any person in the town. We are very annoyed that the trailer has sat in front of us for six months and have the likelihood that the trailer will be there for another six to nine months, given the speed with which the, each of the first two duplexes were built. That we find offensive is an understatement. If the trailer were to be allowed to be parked where it is, it is very likely the portable toilets will be installed beside it with all the, with their irritating and offensive orders prevailing in our area. We, the petitioners of Pinehurst Place, petition you to find that the construction trailer parked at this eastern side of the Pinehurst Place cul-de-sac is a nuisance pursuant to Bylaw 1277 and the corrective action we brought to bear on the property owner. Thank you very much for hearing my, our petition. I have an email that was sent to me by one of the residents up in Pinehurst Place near the cul-de-sac, Mr. and Mrs. Nick Rychuk. She sent me this message on March 14th, 2017. "We are, good morning, we are currently in Arizona, so unable to be attending a meeting. However, we are disgusted with what we have to look at from our front window. For all these years, we've had to put up with the disgusting unkempt grounds in front of us and now this box trailer as well. Every neighbor who lives in that cul-de-sac takes great pride in keeping their home beautiful. We believe it is so unfair and unneighborly to do this to us. I believe we have all been very tolerant to this point, but enough is enough. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Signed, Nick and Carlene Rychuk."
Thank you very much for presenting that information to us. It sounds like some of the things that you were asking for, some of the, the CAO and the bylaw officers have been attending to this.
Yes.
And so if you have something that, which you read today, which was not exactly what you had in here, it was something different, would you be able to give that to, provide that to us?
Yes.
We certainly understand your, your concerns about this and, and the fact that it's been ongoing. I do think that, from my point of view, that, that things are definitely done properly, thank you very much, within the town. And we would, if, if it's not being done properly and following proper procedure and bylaws and zoning and so on and Good Neighbor bylaws, then it will be attended to. So when you bring this information forward for us, we, we certainly have the ability to, thank you very much, to, to, to look at it. So we appreciate you coming forward. You obviously feel very strongly about this and, and thank you. Does anybody have any, any questions? No. Well, thank, thank you, thank you very much. I'm not, I-
Well, this is sort of important. I just, it's very quickly.
Come up to the microphone then, please.
Sorry. I'm just trying to make it quick. I'm Margaret Zilich. I live at 25008 Pinehurst Place. Our house was the second one in Dividend Ridge. We bought the lot in 1990 for the view, the viewers block. I'd just like to invite any one of you, give me a call, come to my house and see for yourself because it is strictly in front, and I can't explain it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Okay? We've all got copies of this. We can certainly look at it. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. The next thing that we have on the agenda is Kelly Glazer, the Executive Director of Destination Asouus.
This session should be as where as a stand.
Pardon me? Oh, are you okay?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks for your time and I imagine you've all had a chance to look at the PowerPoint presentation that I put together in regards to the proposal we have for the visitor center for Destination Asouus and the town of Asouus. I'm just going to sort of quickly talk to the points of it and please ask questions if you have any as we go through. But the first slide basically is an explanation of where we're at and as you all know, we're operating, our service is currently out of the building next door, which is, is not a purpose-designed visitor center and is a little bit small to undergo any real visitor servicing of any, of any volume. And we are excited about the opportunity to take over a larger space that is actually purpose-built and will allow us to snag, for lack of a better word, a lot more traffic. So I'll just carry on. The new location would allow us for increased visibility, increased visitor traffic, provide more space to create new revenue streams. There is a great deal of space there for any type of retail that we'd like to undertake. We would also have space to promote different events and allow for locals to perhaps even have some sort of a farm market or craft market. The parking lot is quite large, so we're able to do something like that. It also presents a clear and present brand about what Asouus is all about. Our office now is, is very serviceable, but it is, we're not in a position to put that, that flavor of the desert and the First Nations culture that we enjoy here. And I mean, it is a beautiful building and I think it really showcases our community to those that are coming down Highway 3 and Highway 97 and coming from the US. I think it really gives us a much more presence of a premier destination. It'll encourage growth for us as well. I think being in that location, even though it's literally a stone's throw away from where we are now, I think it implies more partnership with the Semilkamene group up the road and a stronger relationship with Oliver and the Asouus Wine Association. The benefits, again, at the intersection of two major highways, increased opportunity for our stakeholders, increased retail and display space, and increased storage. We're actually paying for storage right now and this, this place will allow us to have all of our items in one spot. We have a great deal of storage required for all of our guides and magazines as well as tents and trade show items, banners, that sort of thing. Then again, it's a purpose-built visitor center and it does have the amenities in place if we wanted to run a wine store out of there, which we would definitely be investigating over time, but certainly not something that I think we'd be doing right away. And it would allow for increased funds and allow us to increase our operational hours as well. So the stats, they're fairly significant, as you can see. These are stats that we received from the operating provincial visitor center for the, for the 2016 period. The green lines are the current provincial visitor center numbers and the blue lines are our little center just down here. So you can see that there's a significant difference. It's important to remember that the visitor center on the hill is also a Greyhound bus drop and pickup and so there's a lot of people that come in, go in there, and simply use the washroom. It's debatable as to how many people, the staff are in there ticking the box and saying they were a visitor when it, it was simply a bathroom visit. There's a perception that their funding comes from the number of people that they're able to put the box tick on. So I would say that there's some room, but when you see the huge difference in the number of visitors, we better be ready for a lot more visitors than we have today. The retail or the revenue streams that we have thought of that we would like to get involved in fairly quickly are the culinary products that are local and regional. We're well aware there's an existing farm market right next door. I think there's room for more or room for expansion or room for something that focuses on something different and could simply be special occasion type markets. We'd also like to, and have been discussing with the OIB and their cultural center, looking at doing some artistic displays and also selling some more First Nations-oriented products as well as your typical retail clothing lines and things of all of the things that we've been asked for since I've come to work at Destination Asouus, coffee cups and t-shirts and ball caps. We also would like to explore the wine opportunity and wine accessories and we have done some research into that. And at this point, there is not a VQA wine license available. We've been told that in, I believe it's 2018 or 20, no, 2019, that they could be something opening up and we would look at it then. The cost of this wine license isn't clear to me yet, so all of that would have to come into play. And then, of course, there's other opportunities by just simply working with each of the wineries around and offering turns for people to come and pour and, and sell their product. We would also want to engage in selling tickets and packages for various different events. We have been asked in the past to, to do that and I, I just don't feel that we've got the capacity right now with staff hours, that type of thing. And so this is something that I know is out there already that we would be able to engage in and do. And of course, we have our own two events, which is Devour and Oyster Festival, that we would continue to sell and promote through there. We think that this will be a benefit to the attractions in the area as well because, again, it allows us to showcase our natural habitat, our historical and cultural experiences. We'll have the space to probably do some storyboarding and, and create some interest for people. We also have the large parking lot that, you know, maps with, with that sort of thing could be on. We could have trail maps out there. Could be a point of gathering for people as they go and explore the community by foot or by cycling or however. We would try or endeavor to work with the First Nations culture either through ATBC and their visitor service training and perhaps engage one of their people in the visitor center with us. Again, these are conversations that are just starting to happen. And then I've also mentioned the potential of a weekly or bi-weekly market and then the pop-up VQA. And so that would be more along the lines of approaching the different wineries and, and talking to them about, you know, taking turns, so to speak. So these are the numbers that we received from the provincial visitor center on their retail because retail is going to be an important part of making this make sense for us. And so these are their numbers from 2015. I have been talking to the merchandising person in charge at Destination BC, who is quite willing to work with us and help us become successful. I have done a little bit of merchandising and I have, I have opened another gift shop in a previous life. So I do understand a little bit about it, but I really want to understand it very clearly. I also want to take advantage of the relationships that the province has created with these suppliers and make sure that what we do, we do well. In terms of investment, again, this is something I'd like to invest in slowly. There's, there's a reason why I have suggested that we didn't want to, well, there's several reasons, but one of the reasons would be for getting started in there in January would simply be that we need time to do this right and slowly. I don't feel it's advantageous to us to throw ourselves into the deep end of the pool in the spring, ready to go, and disappoint people. So we've got some time to build this up. And so the types of things that are being sold here will be similar items that we think that we'll also have a look at. But again, it'll take some time. But as you can see, the revenue opportunity there is, is significant. This is our prospectus or our projected budget. We pulled together an ad hoc committee within our board that is a visitor center committee. This committee will stay in place until we sign on the dotted line and we're operational or until the board decides that they don't need it any longer. So this, this was done several times over with a lot of different input, thought and research. And this is very conservative, but we're very comfortable with it. As you can see, there is a $50,000 anticipated visitor network funding base that we would receive from the province for operating that visitor center. It's, needs to be clear that it is an Asouus visitor center, not a provincial visitor center. And whatever Asouus decides in terms of how it likes to present and promote regionally, which I believe we do based on our engagement with the RDOS and other partners, that- that we will do that. But in no way means is this going to be a repeat of what it has been in the past and what it was built to do. This will be our visitor center. And so, that fifty thousand dollars is part of the visitor center network opportunity that many other communities are given. And the number they come up with is a secret formula that nobody seems to know. I do know other visitor centers within the province are receiving this much money. Others are receiving quite a bit less. And the only three that receive quite a bit more are Whistler, Vancouver and Victoria. So, that fifty thousand dollars is clearly in there. And then our, our forecast for retail and then the cost of sales. And of course, the rent and whatnot. The next slide is our current situation, our current lease agreement and the costs And then the following slide is the proposed lease agreement. Again, we haven't signed any documents and I haven't seen anything in writing yet. This is conversationally and Barry has been involved in some of these conversations. And then the next slides are simply the floor plans that demonstrate the space that we would have and allow us to expand our offerings and services and opportunities for the stakeholders and the community. So, do we have questions?
Thank you very much. It looks great. And I've been in there several times and upstairs before you were, were here. So I know that there's a little bit more room and it's definitely a wonderful building. I'm just, when you were talking, I was thinking that it might be a good idea for you to be in contact with the museum society. There may be some way that something from the museum could be put in there for a short time, loaned, something like that. Might, that might be workable. And also, the Soyes Farmers Market, Market on Main.
I've been in touch with-
Good, with, with them, because they do-
Of course, not officially under this conversation, but we do work together a little bit.
Good. Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you. Hey, thanks Kelly. I have two questions. With the retail component you're looking at, will there, will there be an effort to sort of non-compete with some of the local businesses?
Yes, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. That was something I thought about right away. And one of the things that I thought about was engaging our retailers in some way to be a partner, as opposed to competing with what they're doing. I, I don't know what that might look like. It could be being able to represent a little bit of their product or even allowing them to have a little small showcase or something like that, so that people know that, you know, this is, this is the places that we have and here's kind of an example of what they might be able to buy if they went there. And when I used to work in hotels, a long time ago, because they don't do it anymore, but in the, in the long lobbies on your way to the convention center, they would have these little show boxes, backlit show boxes for businesses that would put a little bit of, of a display in there, like a window display. We could probably find that type of an opportunity, but something along those lines for sure.
Okay, thank you. My second question was, back the first time around when Destination Soyes was operating at that center, it was a smaller board. It was a smaller organization with a smaller boardroom than you have now. I know there was a discussion about whether there was an opportunity to, to deal with that or expand on that to make it work, because I know Destination Soyes, especially with the economic development component, has a much larger board than they have in the past.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you two things. The first one is, yeah, you're absolutely right. And I've already approached that subject about doing some leasehold improvements and there is no problem with doing so. But I also wanted to not have to use provincial contractors, because we, our, our agreement, our lease agreement will be with the province and Destination BC. So they're under obligation under certain rules and regulations. I said, "Well, I don't want to use your contractors." And they said, "Well, you know, we probably can figure something out." And so, where we've gotten to is, again, all this is on a gentleman's agreement, but what we've gotten to is, is that if I need to do leasehold agreements, as long as they can have a look at the contractor I choose and that they're confident that that contractor is qualified and capable of doing the type of work that they would need to make sure happened in their building, that they would be agreeable. They won't contribute financially to any leasehold agreement or improvements. But I've been talking to Glenn Manziuk and he said, oh, he says, "You don't need to do anything in that boardroom. I'll come there myself and show you how to set that boardroom up." And I'm like, "Yeah, okay."
He'll show you, you'll do it.
Well, we'll see. I, I mean, Barry and I had an opportunity to tour the building, sort of incognito. And so, there was a little bit of time to look at things. And I saw some opportunities where we could knock out a wall and move some office space around. But I'm not going to get too excited until, you know, we get in there. We'll probably be able to go in there with a tape measure and a contractor in the-
Were you dressed up as tourists?
Yeah. In the next couple of months, one of them will be to have Destination BC host with us. But also, you know, it is public knowledge that the contract and the current operator will be coming to an end. And we, we wanted to be respectful of that before we started barging in like that. So, there's a little bit of work to be done in terms of discerning exactly what we need to do to make that. Really, it's the boardroom space that is the only questionable space in the building.
Okay, thank you.
And I've been in that boardroom many times and it actually, it's, it's not as big as this one, but it's not bad. So, it's, it's been, yeah, you can get twenty people in there.
Well, as some of you are aware, we did a stakeholders session a week or two ago and I rearranged the boardroom to accommodate that group. And since then, I've put our boardroom tables out of, they were in a hollow square prior and now they're in an actual boardroom setup. And I think everybody really liked it. The space was better for personal space and I think it'll work in that other room as well.
You got to put your feet on it?
Well, that's good. Well done.
I wish you-
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Kelly? No? Well, thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you.
You seem to have things well in hand, so, good. Keep up the good work.
Thanks so much.
So, our last presentation is Jim Clegg Horn from the Mental Wellness Center, South Okanagan Semilkamine Mental Wellness Society. And, and Mr. Clegg Horn has been here for quite some time listening. He didn't realize that he wasn't first on the agenda. So, I hope you've, you've enjoyed our presentations.
Yeah, thank you.
And please, please go ahead with your presentation.
It's always good to see local government in action. I used to spend a fair amount of time at these meetings as my previous life of a chamber president in, in Seashell.
Oh, okay.
Anyways, good morning, your worship counselors, staff and, and members of the public. And thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Jim Clegg Horn and I'm treasurer of the Mental Wellness Center. Our legal name is actually the South Okanagan Semilkamine Mental Wellness Society, which we recently changed from BC Schizophrenia Society Penticton branch. We didn't go for brevity, obviously, in the new name. We're sort of affiliated with the BC Schizophrenia Society, but we changed our name to clarify and more actively reflect what we do and where we do it. We don't receive any money from the BCSS, the provincial group, and we don't send them any money. But most of our programs we deliver are, were developed and licensed by the BC Schizophrenia Society or the Schizophrenia Society of Canada. If I could have the second slide, please. This year, we're celebrating twenty years of incorporation and twenty-five years of service to the mentally ill in our community. And that's the RDOS, because our service area is essentially the RDOS footprint. And today, we want to talk about the mental health of our community and our role in that. First of all, I guess we'll provide some statistics. I don't have that on the slide, but you probably have heard these statistics before. We don't want to repeat them because I think they're significant. Study indicates that one in five people will suffer a mental illness in their lifetime. Eight percent of adults will experience depression in their lifetime and one percent of the population will develop bipolar disorder. In seventy percent of those cases, mental illness occurs, the onset of mental illness will occur during adolescence or, or young adulthood. There's indications that the incidence of mental illness in our area is higher than the rest of the province. The 2011 Vital Science Report for Penticton found that thirty-two point eight percent of residents suffered from depression or anxiety on a chronic basis. Thirty-two point eight percent. And the BC average is twenty-two percent. And the status statistic is that ninety percent of suicide victims have a diagnosable And right now, in the Penticton community or in the, our area, we're experiencing one youth suicide a month. And I think that's unacceptable. For the RDOS, that one in five represents sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty people that have or will have a mental illness. Now, Soyes population is now just reached over five thousand, I see in the paper, five thousand eighty-five. So that means in your community, potentially, you have a thousand residents that will or have or experience a mental illness. These are just the people suffering from a mental illness, not their family members, friends or other caregivers or supporters. And with twenty percent of the population experiencing mental illness, it touches everyone's life. Now, the thing is that two out of three of those people suffering from a mental illness will not seek help. In the RDOS, that's almost eleven thousand people. So you have eleven thousand people out there who potentially have or will have a mental illness who aren't getting help. And in the Soyes, that would be like six hundred people, potentially. On the positive side, in your community, there's four hundred people who have a mental illness who are getting help. Now, there's recent campaigns such as Bell Let's Talk, Clara's Big Ride, Defeat Depression. And we participate in some of these campaigns and CMHA's Ride Don't Hide. And these have all heightened awareness of mental illness and tried to reduce stigma. But there's still issues involved in the whole area. And encouraging people to come forward when they're struggling with mental illness is still difficult. Now, this increased awareness is great, but what do we do about the people who actually have a mental illness? There's not too much going on there. Slide three, please. So, where, what's our role? I mean, the BC Schizophrenia Society was founded in the early nineteen nineties by a group of families who had family members who were mentally ill and were having difficulty getting support and finding and completing treatment for their mental illness. So we support people suffering from all manner of mental illness, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, depression and anxiety disorders. We do not serve those with cognitive disabilities or development issues unless they also suffer from a mental illness. And I've put some information on your desk, brochure for our organization and our Martin House program and a profile there. So, we at the Mental Wellness Center provide support and counseling to the patient and their support group. Without an informed and involved support group, the chances of the mentally ill completing their recovery journey are reduced. We don't provide treatment, but we open the doors for help and we provide people with a reason to hope and the means to cope, which is our logo. And all of our services are free to the people using them. Next slide, please. So obviously, yeah, the next slide, yeah, there, there we go. Well, that's okay. The geography prevents a problem, a challenge, but with Skype and long distance, we can do a lot of work talking to people. It would cost us twenty thousand dollars a year to send a person down here one day a week to either here or Princeton, because you've got the travel time and the mileage and all the rest of that. We would like to have an office in every community, but finances do not permit at this point. And my thing is you give us seventy grand, we'll open an office here. But unfortunately, that money's not forthcoming. Our peer supporters come to Soyes every two weeks to visit clients at Country Square. Our family support worker travels to Princeton and Oliver Soyes once a month, or as required if families are in crisis. So, the next slide, who we work with. So, the provincial health agencies are charged with responsibility for addressing the treatment of the adult mentally ill in our communities. They deal with mentally ill patients, but not necessarily the family, and provide limit support, limited support to the patient other than with respect to the medical treatments. How they deal with people creates significant barriers to some of the lowest functioning members of our society, especially if they are in crisis due to their mental illness. Some of the greatest stigmatization of the mentally ill occurs within our mental health system. Now, the Ministry of Children and Family Development is responsible for treatment of youth under nineteen. Difficulty there is you have this time where a person may be involved with Ministry of Children, Family Developments up till they're nineteen and then they age out. And you've heard this with other aspects of our system. So they age out, they have to go to the mental health system for adults at, at IHA. Sometimes that handoff doesn't go well. MCFD is more proactive in, in treating the person. Once you get to the outside, ball's in your court. So we find that a lot of people, a lot of youths at that age lose contact with their treatment. And that leads to all sorts of problems. So these are the organizations we work with, the BC Schizophrenia Society, Tier Health Authority, Ministry of Children, Family Developments, Particular Area Cooperative Enterprises, Canadian Mental Health Association, Community Response Network, Aboriginal Mental Health Team, South Okanagan Volunteer Center, amongst others. The Minis-, the Canadian Mental Health Association is also a national nonprofit association with a branch in Penticton. And their mandate is to promote the mental health of all and support the resilience and recovery of people experiencing mental illness. Now, they accomplish most of this through advocacy, education, research and service. And they tend to do things in a workshop format and not so much one-on-one. The Medical, the Mental Wellness Center works with all these agents and we try and fill the gaps in what they deliver and help people navigate their way through the system. And the government is basically overwhelmed by this thing and that's with two-thirds of people not coming forward. If the other two-thirds come forward, we're going to have a real problem in far as getting service to people. So we basically help people navigate the system, engage with local support service for a variety of results. So we're sort of a facilitator in many respects. Like I say, we don't do treatment. And if somebody is struggling with a mental illness, who do they call? How does that process work? Usual process would be to visit your doctor. If you don't have a family doctor, you'll have to go to the walk-in clinic. And sometimes people's mental illness doesn't allow them to sit in a walk-in clinic for three hours to get service. So they leave. Once you get to see a doctor and can convince him or her you are mentally ill, then he or she may refer you to a psychiatrist. The wait to see the psychiatrist may be two, three or more months. Once you see the psychiatrist, he or she will make an assessment and diagnosis and prescribe medication and will refer to therapy or counseling. Ongoing visits will be required to follow up on effectiveness of medication and renew or change prescriptions. And in thirty percent of cases, the medications don't work. So people spend a lot of time trying to find medications that do work if they can. This is an ideal outcome, but only addresses the medical part of the treatment. You know, for me, the reality of the current status of delivery and accessibility of mental health care is best summed up by, by an incident I read about in Vancouver. A young man got a fake gun, went to a payphone and called nine-one-one and advised he was going to kill a police officer. The police traced the call to the phone, payphone and dispatched officers to apprehend the caller. Fortunately, upon arrival at the scene, they didn't shoot him. Seems to be the case in many instances. When arrested, he said, "I did it because I thought I would more likely get help with my mental illness issues than if I went to the hospital and asked to be admitted." So, you know, people are less intimidated by an armed encounter with the R-CMP as to go to our hospitals and get help. And we've had families go to the hospital, be told their child's either not sick enough or too sick. Now, if you're a parent and you have a child who's sick, go to the hospital and say he's too sick, what do you do? And this is what we're faced with. So we get involved with these people, try and, well, our president and executive director, Sharon, she's got forty years of psychiatric nursing experience. So if she goes to somebody and says this person needs help, they tend to listen to her. But if it's just a family member, you know, what do they know? Right? So we have people, you know, come to us just distraught. They don't know what to do. So that's sort of the role that we fill. And, you know, people get so frustrated trying to get help for their mental illnesses that they commit acts of desperation. Now, the biggest challenge is for that person who has been diagnosed and treated to re-enter or become part of society. After the crisis of their mental illness, they may have no job, no income, no support system. It's critical for them to have the support necessary to ensure they stay on their medication and learn the coping skills. and learn the coping skills necessary to function as a productive member of society. Could I have an extra screen, please? So that's just our office hours. So we have our office in Pendicton. So we can meet with people by person, in person or by phone. And we have a family social worker, or a family support worker, who is a bachelor of social work, and she meets with people on a one-on-one basis to help them sort through this. We have a pretty full plate, excuse me. We serve about five or six hundred families a year, and at any one time, at fifty to sixty active files. Our society has no paid executive director or manager, and we log over two thousand volunteer hours per year. If the people struggling alone come forward, we, as well as the rest of our society, are going to have a huge problem. Now, the programs we offer, next slide, please. One we offer is Strengthening Families Together, and these are led by a family support worker or a trained family member. Next slide, please. And so it's a ten-session course for family and friends, providing information, skill building, and support. So it's ten sessions, but we tend to do that over five Saturdays, so we do two modules a day. So it is a commitment by people, but it's a serious issue that they're generally dealing with. Next slide, please. Yeah, so on Mondays, there's a family support group at the Pendicton Regional Hospital from twelve to one, and there's individual help available by appointment from two to four. First and third, fourth Tuesdays, our family support worker goes to Summerland. On the second Tuesday, she goes to Princeton. First Wednesday, she goes to Caramia's. Second Thursday, there's an evening support group in Pendicton. And on the fourth Thursday, she comes all over Soias. Next slide, please. The program we're promoting most right now is our Martin House program, which is for youth sixteen to thirty with a diagnosed mental illness. Next slide, please. So it's basically a support program to provide them with socialization opportunities, help with individual goals and objectives. Quite often, it's difficult for people to maintain contact with their education, with employment, whatever, and need some help to do that. Next slide, please. So basically, yeah, we provide them with supportive education, employment, paid or volunteer. We help them if they want to get work to try and find that, refer them to agencies to help with that. Independent living skills, because some of these kids, like I say, they're moving out of home, and they need to learn how to live by themselves. Peer support, healthy living, including social skills and creative arts. So that's the Martin House program. It costs us seventy-two thousand dollars a year to run that program, and right now, we have to do that all with fundraising and various grant applications, et cetera, et cetera. So we also have peer support programs, and these are people who have what they call lived experience. They've experienced mental illness, they've worked their way through it, and they've gone to a stable point. And so they can impart some of their knowledge and experience, and more importantly, compassion and understanding to people that are suffering from mental illness. Next one, please. We also do partnership education. This is to combat stigma and discrimination. And what we do there is we have a person who has a lived experience, a peer supporter, and a clinician, a psychiatrist, psychologist, or whatever, who's treating that person. They go to places of business, other places, and they each tell their story, and how that's worked to educate people about what it's like for the different people involved in the process. And then the next one is Teens in Control. This is for teenagers who have a family member who has a mental illness, because what do they know about mental illness, and their parent or whatever may be experiencing odd behaviors? And also, quite often, they are left and have to take more responsibility. Sometimes the teenager ends up looking after their parents, unfortunately. So this will give them the skills they need to try and understand and deal with the mental illness of a family member. And then the next slide is Kids in Control. Same idea, but it's directed towards younger children who, you know, may not understand what's going on and need some understanding, and it's done at their level. And it's a program where they come with their family or whatever, and they're taught, you know, or educated on what's happening and what's going on with their family member. And then the next one, we have a program called Footprints, which is for sort of people in what they call the recovery journey. And for us, the recovery journey is somebody who's, you know, dealt with the crisis of their mental illness, they're now moving on and trying to put their life back together. And we understand, you have to understand, mental illness doesn't get cured, you know, it's basically a life sentence, pretty much. And all you can do is hope to manage it. At this point, they haven't got to the point where they can prevent or cure a lot of these mental illnesses. So that's what those two programs are about. The next slide, please. So around that, we do social events, special seasonal events, and individual support to attain personal goals. And we also have the Puppeteer Program, which is also directed at elementary school. Kids are going to the elementary schools, and it's a puppet program that, once again, just explains to young children, you know, the aspects of mental illness at a very, you know, level that they can appreciate and understand. Next slide, and the next slide after. So that's our phone number and our address, as I said, is four six, and our website is So we receive some of our funding from Interior Health Authority for the family support and peer support programs for adults. Our total budget is two hundred and fifty grand, including a hundred and thirteen thousand program funding from I.H.A. for those two programs. Our wage expenses are a hundred and fifty-five grands, the bulk of our wages, and are for family support workers, peer support coordinators, Martin House coordinator, peer support workers. The hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar gap is funded by grants, fundraising, and donations. The biggest challenge, as I said earlier, is trying to raise the seventy-two thousand dollars a year for our Martin House program. Unfortunately, mental illness is not something you can spend money on, it goes away, as I said. It's going to be with us for some time. So how does untreated mental illness impact local government? Through higher policing costs, more emergency room visits, lost productivity in the local workforce, and to some degree homelessness. Studies indicate the amount of cost, the annual cost in Canada is fifty billion dollars of mental illness. Anyways, I thank you for your time, and I hope you, I hope we have provided some useful information about mental health care in our community. We're not here for money today, but are looking to explore what partnerships we can develop with municipal governments around the issue of mental health in our community. We may apply for a grant in the upcoming grant cycle. We also need your support to lobby government to provide more support for programs for the mentally ill. We need volunteers and board members and donations to meet this growing need in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clegg-Horn. That was very interesting and enlightening. We are on Granicus, which means that your presentation will be available to people on the internet. And Mr. Lacy is here from the Soias Times, and he certainly has been writing things down as you have, as you have talked. So you have got some publicity about this, for sure. When you come, one question before I turn it over. When you come down here to Soias, do you go to Sagebrush Lodge, the Interior Health Building? Is that where?
I'm not actually sure where Robbie meets when she comes down here. We have arrangements with different people, and certainly we're open to any suggestions. I'm not sure.
And these would be available, I assume, at Interior Health, if people wanted?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Or at our website, or just email us.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess that was relating to my question, when you come down here on the fourth Thursday, who did you partner with here in town, or if you'd talked to the Child Development Center or?
I don't believe we're strictly of any partnership with anybody. We get referrals from various agencies, and Robbie comes down and meets with whoever.
Individual people.
Yeah, pretty much.
You might want to talk to Child Development Center.
Yeah, okay, yeah. To them, yes, as well.
Yeah. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam McCordough. Well, great presentation, always great to bring awareness to this. I have a couple of questions. You provided some statistics about British Columbia and the Okanagan area. I'm curious why, or, and it might be an unfair question, but I'm curious as to why the statistics are so much greater in the Okanagan compared to the rest of the province? And mental health issues are not confined to the British Columbia area. It's in fact a challenge all across Canada, and there are so many inadequacies that occur all the time with funding and people that are engaged, or even people that even care about. Many of the situations have gone. And specifically, I'm wondering, is there any hope? Is there a light at the end of the tunnel that you're seeing federally? I know you're fully engaged in the British Columbia, Okanagan area, but is there going to be any relief or any kind of hope come from our federal government at all? Because ultimately, they can solve so many of the challenges.
Well, I did read recently that the federal government has put a bunch of money to the provincial government for mental health issues, and some of that would be youth. And right now, the provincial government, they are funding youth centers, and right now, we're trying to get one in Pendicton. There was a process that happened a little while ago where thirteen communities applied for one, and they funded five. They've now decided they're going to fund another four or five. And the people in our community have already raised seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the building. So we think we stand a pretty good chance of getting a question there. As to your, or getting funding there, as to your question about why things are higher in our area than perhaps other part of the province, I think there's a couple of things at work there. Number one, I spent thirteen years in the banking business in this area, and I know that thirty-eight percent of people in this, or kids in school, come from a single-parent family living in poverty. Now, some of mental illness is physiological, like your brain doesn't produce dopamine, and that's why a lot of people are depressed, because that's the thing that makes you happy. But some of it's situational. And also, children can be traumatized. There's evidence now that children traumatized in early age, they will change the way their brain develops, similar to PTSD and stuff like that. So if children are through trauma, stress, those sorts of things, and I know the employment market in this part of the world is brutal. I mean, my days in the bank, I knew that. I took over a desk in nineteen eighty-seven and consisted of all the people that had failed in nineteen eighty-three and eighty-four. So I think part of it is the economy, quite frankly, the level that people are getting paid and what it costs to live, like every other community, but here, that may be a little bit higher. Also, it may be that there's been a lot of work done in this area, in the schools and elsewhere, around the stigmatization and awareness. So maybe that when people are surveyed in this area, they're more willing to say they think they have a mental illness than in other cases, because there's still a tremendous amount of stigma. My thing of these things, like, how many people are sitting here trying to figure out whether I have a mental illness? Because you don't know. You look at somebody, you can't tell, right? But I think here, it has to do with the economy, it has to do with the pressures on family life and children. And I think those are why it's higher in this area than some other areas of the province. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for coming and speaking to us. When you answered Counselor Rhodes' question, and I hear a lot about federal programs where they're looking at adding resources for youth mental health, and I know that with, from my understanding, a lot of issues around youth mental health, health, is that they've turned to drugs and alcohol and things of that nature.
Self-medication.
Correct. So what I don't hear a lot about, and maybe there's something I don't know, are the efforts to provide resources for pre-teen and children before they get to that point where they're self-medicating?
Well, this is the thing. I mean, we've chosen for the Martin House program to be sixteen to thirty, because under sixteen, you run into age of consent issues. Below that, though, if somebody comes to us and they're twelve years old, we're going to find out what's going on and give them what help we can. But so a lot of it is that Asker's issue and the split between MCFD and I.H.A. at that age, that causes a lot of issues. They're talking about putting the whole mental health thing under one, which would be great, under one group, under the Ministry of Health, so that there isn't this, you know, what age are you, where are you going to go, right? And then when you get here, you've got to go there, and it's all different. So the hope is that, yeah, and I agree, I was shocked by the suicide rate in the ten to thirteen-year-old cohort. You know, and in some of the last suicides we've had in Pendicton, they're thirteen-year-olds. Now, how's a thirteen-year-old get to the point where they think the only solution to their problem is to take their own life? You know, this is the, you know, and how do you deal with those people? I mean, we have a hard time because they're so young, you know? Ministry of Children and Family Development, they think they're doing a bang-up job. You know, they don't think they need any more, and they don't need any help from people like us, and we can't engage them to do like we do with I.H.A., because we can deliver the peer support, the family support, way cheaper than I.H.A. can, like, way cheaper. So they let us do that. In fact, in some cases, for the therapeutic volunteer program, they just give us the money so we can write the checks, because we can do that cheaper than they can.
It always seems like some of the most obvious solutions to our challenges are the hardest to get through. And when you look at any situation from a root cause analysis and wonder why our teens turn to drugs and our adults turn to crime, there seems to be, if you'd agree, a hole in the system when it comes to children that are showing signs of mental health issues that obviously escalate when they're not getting the resources.
Part of it is educating parents, because I, we had a woman come into the office the other day, and it was actually quite heartbreaking. She was in her late twenties, early thirties, I'm not sure how old she was, and she suffered from depression. Her parents just thought she was lazy. So she went to her parents and asked for help. They just said, "You're just lazy, just get over it." Well, these people can't get over it. And unfortunately, a lot of people from our generation that aren't educated, you know, when you see somebody who can't get out of bed, doesn't go to work, you know, maybe your employer, you've got, somebody's got an absenteeism problem, they never come to work, probably there's something going on there, right? But there's that, two-thirds of people aren't seeking help. And, you know, it's this sort of thing, if you're mildly depressed or mildly anxious, maybe you think that isn't a problem. Maybe you think everybody's like that, especially as a young child, you have no comparison. The ten to thirteen-year-old cohort is really what bothers me, and, yeah, I don't know how you get to that group. You know, it really involves the parents, and these days, parents, they're working two jobs sometimes in this market, two, three jobs, trying to make it work. Kids are often left unattended. You know, some kids are subject to abuse. You know, I've heard of kids, they have to sneak out at night and sneak back in in the morning to go to school because they're being abused. So you take a child like that, and, you know, it's some of it situational, if there's a bit of a genetic predisposition or family history, then, you know, but, yeah, I don't know. Those kids are in grade, what, grade ten? Ten is what, grade four, five, six? You know, and we talk to people, try and engage the middle schools, and some of them, "Oh, well, you know, we don't think we've got a problem." Well, they know they've got a problem now, because some of these kids are in middle school that are completely suicidal.
Counselor Hamburgh.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. Thanks for the presentation. I sit on the Child and Youth Committee in connection with the Town of Soias, and we, there's about sixteen of us, I guess, on the board and are in the committee. And we just have just endless conversations about how to address these challenges that everybody has. And one of the areas of appeal that we continue to make is for people to volunteer for foster parenting, because many of the children, more so under the age of sixteen, that, you know, have been taken from the homes, but there's no place to put them. And there's, you know, and medicine is just not the answer. You know, it's, in some cases, of course, it is, but in many cases, it isn't. And so it's sort of a resource center that we need to create somehow, where not necessarily do, should we be looking at just a parent situation? Maybe we need a center where there's caretakers and places for these people to spend a week or two or three to reevaluate their situation, particularly with little kids.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, we have a population that's aged, and there's lots of people have time, but it's, we're finding it's, you know, I've been involved in various things for my thirty-five years, with the bank, chambers of commerce, and other things, and to get people to volunteer now is very difficult. Younger people aren't doing it, you know? And the older people, like, we have one woman, she was running the branch in Chilliwack. She's ninety-five years old. You know, and our executive director, I mean, she worked forty years, has been retired for ten years, doing, helping out with us, you know, and she's now sixty-seven, and the reason she's not here today, she was in the hospital for the last week and a half, right? And fortunately, she's going to be able to come back to work, but, you know, when she goes, we don't know what we're going to do, because how do you replace forty years of psychiatric nursing experience, you know?
The only person that did have some funds available that continued to talk to us was the United Way. And she, I don't know what the maximum there is, but, you know, you may want to just make a note, and I can pass the name of the contact person on to you, because there is funds available for maybe one little focus in.
Yeah. Well, that's what we're happy to do, is get a bit from here to there. We've, we got some money from, tell us, the city of Pendicton gave us eighteen thousand dollars last year, and again this year, which is great. Our D.U.S. turned us down, but that's another thing, we'd have to sit in front of all twenty directors, I think, and convince them to give up a thousand or two thousand dollars out of their budget, which is what we intend to do, and that's part of the process of going, is going to all the community, local community governments, and then the R.D.U.S. and, you know, if everybody should have contributed a little bit, we can make it work.
It does help.
You know, with the youth piece, with us being in Pendicton, that's tough, because how do they get from here to there, whatever? how do they get from here to there, whatever, but, you know, we do what we can by phone, by Skype, by whatever. If somebody reaches out, we're going to help them.
Might be enough to pay one person.
Exactly. Every little bit helps.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So thank you very much for coming. You've obviously stirred up a lot of conversation about this, and we appreciate you taking the time to come down and enlighten us on some of the concerns about this.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are the proposed amendments to the Operational Services Policy Inspection Schedule. Mr. Dinwiddie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The current Operational Services Inspection Schedule, P W zero zero eight, outlines a variety of infrastructure inspections performed by the department on an annual basis. This policy outlines the frequency and approximate time of years the inspections take place. The purpose of the schedule is to ensure that town forces are exercising due diligence in repairing any observed defects in the community's road, water, sewer, and parks networks. This policy was last updated on March seventh of two thousand and five. It should be noted that it is recommended by the Municipal Insurance Association of British Columbia, M I E B C, that communities review their inspection policies to ensure that they are complied with. Ensuring compliance with existing policy greatly improves the community's chances of successfully defending themselves against possible future legal claims. For an overview, the Operational Services Department would like to amend the inspection policy, P W zero zero eight, with regards to tree inspections in parks and on boulevards. The current policy states that the department will inspect boulevard trees once a year in April or May, and trees in the parks every three months, then every month from May through September. The Operational Services Department does not have a certified arborist on staff who would be qualified to make accurate assessments of tree health, and there is no plan to incorporate this position into the Operational Services workforce. Alternatively, the Operational Services Department would like to change this policy to state that trees on boulevards and in parks would be inspected upon report from crew or the public. For example, if a member of the public reports a broken tree branch, the Operational Services Department would investigate, and if possible, correct the situation within the limits of our equipment and expertise. If the issue is beyond the scope of the department, though, a certified arborist would be hired to evaluate and deal with this specific situation. All inspections and their subsequent resolutions will be documented and obtained by the Operational Services Department for use in the event of any future liability claims against the Town of Osoias. It should be noted, though, that all other areas listed in the Infrastructure Inspection Schedule policy are presently being carried out by the Operational Services Department within the suggested timeframes. So the options before council are that, one, that council approve amending Operational Services Policy, P W zero zero eight, to read that trees on boulevards and in parks will be inspected upon report from crew or the public; two, that council does not amend Operational Services Policy, P W zero zero eight, and it remains as it currently is written; option number three is that council requests additional information prior to making a decision, and administration recommends that council adopt option number one.
Thank you very much. When I was looking at the schedule here, some of them look like, like the potholes one yearly. Is that often enough, or, obviously, you've gone through this list and decided that these, all of these?
Yeah, typically, if potholes are going to show up, they show up in the spring because the frost comes out of the ground, and that's kind of what causes the pothole to form. We're quite lucky here in that the frost typically doesn't go down very far, so it tends to come out fairly easily, and it doesn't chew up our roads very badly. But we, if we see a pothole, we tend to fix it, so.
Sure. So all of the other things that you have on the list, you're comfortable with the schedule that goes with it?
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
I just, I just caught this, we brought this in terms of the, in front of the committee, the whole, to see if council wanted to have any discussion around the policy and any changes. The actual approval of this particular policy probably should go to the afternoon meeting. So we'll be looking for a resolution to move this to this afternoon's meeting, and based on one of those three options for this afternoon. My apologies to Jim, I didn't catch that when I went through the report.
So are there any other questions? Jim, first, yeah?
Just a comment. Good for you for bringing this up after twelve years. That's quite a lengthy period of time, even though most of it is pretty, pretty common stuff that we go through and that kind of thing, but I'm certainly supportive of reviewing these policies a little bit more frequently than every twelve years, or however long that is. Do we have an arborist in our community?
No.
We don't, so we'd have to go out and...
Typically, the arborist that we use is from Penticton. They've worked for us in the past, they seem to do good work, so we would simply commission, like I said, if there was a specific tree where we needed to know, is it healthy, is it, does it need to come down, or something like that, we would hire them to come out and look at that specific tree, and there is budget money for that, but it's much more efficient if we just look at individual trees, or maybe we save up and have them come down and look at six or seven trees in one shot.
Some of the trees that are either stage four or have already been determined to be invasive species and those kind of things, are we actively doing something about that? I'm just wondering if you can maybe comment on, like, the Russian olive elms and all those other nasty things that we have in our community?